On March nineteenth, twenty twenty four and five. Roll call please. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Goffmore. Trustee Romo. President Calhoun.
Present.
Dr. Curry.
Present.
Item two oh one, approval of closed agenda. Can I have a motion? Motion to approve closed session agenda. I have a second.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Card. Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dr. Moore.
No discussion.
Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
President Calhoun, no discussion. Yes, and trustee Ramos second. So, seeing no discussion, please place your online vote.
I took my my own vote.
Yes. President Calhoun, your vote? Ah, yes. I will adjourn the close. I have to move to mother. Oh. Trustee Dr. Moore? Dr. Moore, can you give me your verbal votes?
I.
That's a unanimous yes. I will adjourn the close session at five ten P M. What? I don't have. Um, yeah. Can you activate little down that top? It does not say Jordan. Not yet. Not yet. Okay. No. I can't make a big order at. Six oh two P M. Roll call please. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Dr. Moore.
Present.
Trustee Ramos.
Present.
President Calhoun. Present. Dr. Curry.
Here.
Item five oh two, let it be believed. Uh, Dr. Curry, again, believe that in this. Our prayers, they just. Done in the last day, so we're there. And to the college, we would change. For the nation, I would go. In this school, the diversity of citizens. Item. In front of action taken in closed second pursuit of only code section five four nine by seven point one. There were nothing to report. Item seven oh one. Approval of open session agenda. Dr. Curry, do we have any corrections or additions to the amendment?
No, not.
Can I have a motion?
Second it. Second.
Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Card.
No discussion.
Dr. Mr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Sonia Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Juanita Goffmore.
No discussions.
Trustee Andreas Ramos.
No discussion.
President Barbara Calhoun. No discussions. Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote. Item eight. Request to address the board of trustees, agenda and non-agenda items. Pursuant to board policy two three five zero, public participation. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda items. Each speaker has a three-minute time limit and the time will be posted on the board, on the agenda. We'll see it when it comes up. We'll still make sure. Yeah. Mr. Benjamin Holyfield?
My name is Benjamin Holyfield. And I'm speaking on item thirteen that one. We're requesting that item be pulled. So, forget about it. And that's. First thing you get is understanding. That's what we're about today. So, that's what I'm here for. Requesting that item be pulled from the agenda. Thank you.
Nika Black. For item thirteen point one.
Evening, trustee Boyd. Dr. Curry, everyone. My name is Nika Black. I'm speaking on item number thirteen point one. So, we are requesting that the item be pulled mainly because we have a few questions regarding exactly what we've already done today. Um, after looking at the initial version of this agenda item, there was a donation recommendation by the facilities committee of four thousand six hundred dollars to change the name from Holyfield Library to Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. Um, the reason why I'm not quite understanding how this is supposed to work because that was not the discussion that I had during the facilities committee meeting. Um, I would also like to request minutes from that meeting just to make sure that what was discussed and entered was. Which is not on record on the. That we all have an understanding. Um, additionally, during the facilities committee meeting, it was requested by that staff that we provide a rendering of what we wanted the name of the library to look like. Um, which is why I'm not sure, uh, item number two was denied. Um, for outdoors signage, how can they recommend to the board of denial if they haven't received the rendering? Uh, I would like them to wait on that ruling because we pay money to an architect, uh, to, to design the name options. Um, also, you know, I'm a big person on teamwork. Compton College is a community effort and I was just thinking, you know, we have the benefit of our special trustee who wrote the policy, A R thirty three twenty. Maybe he can give us some insight on how to follow and how to restore the name Emily B. Hart Holyfield. I would like it in the agenda and in the documentation to state that you're at a full restoration. We're not new here. Um, Emily B. Hart Holyfield was there prior. As evidenced by the website from Compton College, it's in the U S Library of Congress archive. I also provided that information to the facilities committee that showed how the signage looked, how it looked on the webpage, all the branding concerning the Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. And so that they could even have a deal probably requesting everything to be restored. Again, respectfully, I'm simply asking until you have a definitive understanding of what we are requesting that we hold up on voting on item number thirteen point one. Thank you all.
Commissioner Bruce Boyden on thirteen point one.
Good afternoon. How are you? I, I changed because I did know it was on the agenda about the name of the library, which is something dear and dear to me, not just because the city is here, it's not only here, but because it's a historical concern. This is just for the knowledge of people here. This is my fiftieth year on this campus. So, it means something to me. It's important to me and I will be here till death, I imagine. As I was walking up the steps, I was thinking this would be much physically for me to get up the steps to come to the meeting now. So, you know, time is of the essence. But I am, again, there's been in support of having the name changed for the basic purposes of historical point of view for the college. There are many people here. This college has been in existence since nineteen twenty seven. It is not a new college. It is not a beginning college. It is a well-established college over many, many, many years. So, it's important to the community. It's important to, I believe, with two different words in a row in this campus. I just think it's important. Now, I think it's something that this community wants and something that this community.
Richard Earl on thirteen point one.
Good evening. I didn't give you all. I'm the president of the commission. Only hard. How does it look? Remembering. Concerns of this. And in that, um, um, just to say that her, her name come off of building that not, not getting sure as one before. Really hurts our farm here in the fountain to see that, to see things like that. With it in, long and pretty long. Pretty wonderful. Would you want people on this? That's what is good out. This one, it's not just about taking the name down. It isn't something that needs to be stayed. It's still a race of history. We need to, we need to explore that and then what they need to do. Appreciate the, 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 the. Whoever, you know, it's a script.
General speakers. Request. Item eight oh two. Council of community public district board trustees future agenda items request. And we have new requests for future agenda items. Student trustee Card.
Sullivan.
Dr. Little. Trustee Sonia Lopez.
Sullivan.
Trustee Dr. Moore.
Yes, I do have a future agenda items request. I would like to, um, I would like to, um, add to control agenda. Looking at the, um, booster club. Booster club. The, uh, uh, the support that we have for our student athletes. To see exactly what type of support, equipment um, for our um, students and I will speak a little bit more about why this is, uh, becoming a concern when I give my, um, updates on the building agenda. But it's, um, and it's not, it's all the athletic departments, the athletic departments, the different, um, the different teams, the clubs that we have for our students. I'm just, can I go to them? You want to analyze? He actually is about to speak. No. Okay. Well, wait, that's your, it's a police, um, the two. I don't think I'm reporting. So, okay. Does that, does that frame you have a certain recommendation or kind of thing?
I don't, I, I need to understand. I don't know. I'm trying to talk to these guys. I want to understand a little bit. You asked a question about boosting water and athletics. And so, since I don't attend, I don't want to get into it because it's a part of the future item.
Yes.
But I think, I need to understand more of the context. I think that I don't know.
All right. Thank you. That's so much. Okay. So, that's the wrong.
Trustee. Ramos. I do have a future. Uh, there is no board policy, nor is there A R policy. If you have any board member that wants to attend Compton College and what are the items that the board members are available to them? Like when it comes to the farmer's market? Like when it comes to, um, every table? Laptop, hotspot? Headphones? Whatever all the students are offered? And what the board members can or cannot receive? Want to hear? Ask this question? For future. I would like for somebody to look. Now, I could go down and do this myself. I am really trying to stay in my lane as a board trustee. I would like some information on how spectrum one can be on our campus so that our meetings can be televised and on a channel. Channel twenty eight, channel thirty six, or whatever government channel that spectrum will be able to show our board meetings on. So that citizens can watch our board meetings and there's nothing wrong with YouTube. But if they are on spectrum one on a government channel that they give it to you for free? How do, how does this college go about doing? I would like that on a future agenda. I'm trying not to go down the spectrum. Which is only you and their shopping center. We've got a good lot of the shopping. To try and stay in my lane of the board. And I think that this is my third request for a future agenda. And baseball wants to. I like to have that as a future agenda. Item nine. Board of trustees meeting minutes. Item nine oh one, minutes of the February twentieth, twenty twenty four, but board of trustees meeting. Can I have a vote? Motion by trustee Ramos. Second by student trustee Card. Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Card.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Sonia Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Juanita Goffmore.
No discussion.
Trustee Andreas Ramos. President Barbara Calhoun, no discussion. Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote. Item ten, reports from representatives and employees organization. Ten point oh one, associate student government report, Crystal Moon. Item ten point oh two, academic senate report.
She's in the best of this. Is that right?
Doctor Miller.
She's right over there.
Okay. Ten point oh three, C C C F E, certificated employee report, Dr. David Chapman.
Me, secretary, others in Calhoun and the rest of trustees, thanks to everyone today. Uh, so, quick report on, on where, uh, simply see I mean, is that representing our, our full-time and part-time faculty and place of teaching faculty, librarians and counselors, uh, frontline workers or part of our frontline workers here on campus. Um, since I spoke to you back in January, uh, we, we have met again with the district's negotiation team. So, we are happy to be back negotiating for, for our updating to our successor contracts. Uh, we met three times with the districts. Uh, both on February twenty seventh, March fifth and March twelve. Uh, just a, a general synopsis of where we're at. We are exchanging our articles. Uh, right now, we, our last meeting on the twelfth, we exchanged, or we countered, we countered the district with our, with an updated compensation article which includes questions around our salary schedule. Uh, and again, as a reminder, we have presented to the board, uh, last year that we, unfortunately, our, our district is, uh, being, uh, one of the least of the thirteen, the twenty five districts for L A counties. Uh, right there in the very bottom. So, we are, it's a very important part for us, compensation, but also included in that article is our, our health and, health and welfare articles. We have to do with our healthcare. Um, this year for twenty twenty four, I still know, um, doctor premiums went up. And so, so, so for us, one of the, um, one of the day concerns is that many of our, well, we, we sort of have this, 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 this as a, this I'm seeing weird view is that many of our colleagues, work on colleagues are unable to, to afford to be, uh, be part of the two-member or family annual health insurance because of the high cost. Um, uh, we feel that there is a, um, a just way to go with our healthcare and welfare to prepare for our part-time and full-time faculty. Yes, legislation that asks, uh, that will help our part-time faculty and we're very interested and continue to talk with our, the district's negotiations team that we have. Uh, we look forward to meeting with the district again on the twenty sixth, the district negotiations team on twenty sixth, where we will be discussing, among other things, are a few articles related to the economic situation, position and other that, where this, uh, board trustee has been made aware, you know, went that farther around the current issues with the governor office, sort of, uh, the, 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 the issues now to impact our, uh, us here in the district. One of the, um, one of the main things that we do want to say from our side as faculty, but also with our, uh, classified colleagues, is that, uh, we really do want to stand firm that the, the, um, the big issues and the, and the big, um, financial, um, changes that the district is facing, facing the board of trustees, facing board of trustees, what you all are facing to try to figure out a balance. Um, should not be put on us as faculty or classified, in fact, in the prospect, uh, for, uh, qualified colleagues as well in terms of it being, uh, uh, a harm to the, uh, to the district for for us asking or demanding for equity. And by equity, I mean equity with a sibling, uh, district as well. We feel that there is a way, there's a will, there's a way and we want to continue to work with the districts. Uh, negotiation team at our names, it was there. And, uh, and lastly, uh, uh, just an overall, um, an overall, I guess, comment that the, um, the union is, is continuing to look forward to, um, they're addressing issue where, where, where now uh, well over a year and a half passed when our contract ended. So, we're looking forward to continuing to meet. We have only three more scheduled, uh, right now, it's tentative. We have, uh, well, four more, four more possibilities to meet with the districts before the, before the summer break. Um, and we're going to try to continue to meet more. We are trying to be more available to meet, but we're also looking forward to the district to be available to the district to, to, to us. And, uh, I guess a, a final comment, so I guess I wanted to say, um, the last month's meeting, I pretend not to hear. And I still want to make sure that those by employees. Is that we, I think that there is some agreement that we, that we do have around where the, uh, how we feel the, uh, by agreement, I mean agreement with the district and particularly Dr. Curry, um, the recent article, um, having to do with, um, the question of, of, of equity for our students and be kind of tired of like the nickel and diming that the state does, what the governor's office does to, we definitely agree on that as well. We feel that for us as faculty that, uh, we should be treated with the district with the same respect or seeing ourselves, uh, not to be niggled and dimmed with what's being passed up the table. Definitely look forward to having productive discussions and we want to be seen as a part that any investment in us as faculty is an investment in increasing the full-time, uh, book on students here on campus, some attention and continuing to build, uh, the strength of our community that I'm to accomplish. So, we look forward to, uh, getting some of the district's, uh, negotiations table and we will be back there next month and it's going to be all updates. All right. Thank you.
C C C F E classified and. That point of change. Now, we have item eleven, presentations.
Tonight, we have a couple of presentations. Uh, the first presentation we have is Dr. Seager Miss in regards to the confidence in student success teams. I know he also has a scope of doing as well. My favorite was Dr. Miss. Thank you. Uh, good evening, gorgeous, and friendly, current. An amazing audience. Um, but I'm here to manage the, the, the council and the deputies. I come from college, I'm here with my colleagues.
Everyone, my name is only, but also that is faculty, also the co-lead for one of the success.
And the interest is I have a good state. I'm a good lover. Okay, so we'll start off with table of contents, right? What's that box reached by design? Um, our North Star shooting goals, uh, the discussion that we have in the cabinet committee, which is smart goals, even over the season seventeen, accomplishment activities and success. This is the Compton College Convention by Design slide and the topic of the by design model framework, which borrowed some of the logical method. Um, and it, and it highlights the different points in the student's journey, as you can see here, um, from connection all the way to transition. And I mentioned this in the past, actually the logical mountain framework, the score student journey points. Connection actually bothers confusion that Compton College has a fifth one that's transition, that's been transitioning to a four-year institution, uh, or and or integrated workforce. Uh, so, some of the things that you'll see today that I'm going to highlight are some of the activities that happen, uh, across the campus, new student success teams, such as early alerts, um, redesigning of the student experience of council. Uh, next slide. So, these are strategic goals, twenty three, twenty four, strengthening on-ramps for new students, returning students who have stopped out. Those students who have stopped out, meaning they are no longer at Compton College for whatever reason. They're giving, you know, a number of different factors, sort of, sound out, no longer in Compton College or whatever. Two, improve holistic student support for those students in English one oh one. Um, and bullet point two and three is helping our students transfer from, for complete transfer to English and transfer to math. And then the last point is helping our students in retaining them, the next person, for one term. And these are North Star successful enrollment, uh, making sure our students come back in one term together and making sure our students can be transferred to English and math, which is also part of our institution's set goals. We've had recent discussions with the guide of capital committee around making our, uh, North Stars and strategic goals smart goals, so that specific measurable achievement will relevant and time-bound. I'll give you an example, um, helping our students complete transfer to English and math, which is bullet point number three. You know, an example could be. Holding into student equity plan is improving transfer level English and black African American students and Latin American students. That's like an example about a smart goal. So we want from those uh strategic goals, North Stars, not having a discussion around smart goals, uh, next slide. And this is overview of the student success team at the center is our students. And uh, we're really building a community around them, which includes a variety of different folks. Uh, instructional faculty, counseling faculty, student service advisors, classified professionals, deans and chairs. And so we're really trying to build a home base for our students, we're trying to have uh an experience for our students. Uh, you know, normally our schools, um, you know, think about it, first year experience, power to U S care. You know, they have higher retention rates, even condition rates persistently, but we're really doing that and scaling it for all students. That's what the student success team do, uh, next slide. Uh, and uh, some of the things that uh you'll see as examples from the W M E, uh, including, you know, meeting with our students uh through program app. Which is a visualization of courses our students can take, including career information such as salary growth, um, job placement. Um, also connecting our students to earlier, which are faculty submit. Instructional accounts, back to the best of early orders of their teaching, uh, and then follow up, making sure that our students get the support they need. So these are just some examples and the one we will really do, uh, the nuts and cranks of what we're actually.
I would find some of the activity that we're doing in the research deck of the week, um, I was three last year, we kind of told you earlier, we're doing a feature of the area, I must say, success teams. And it's not having a, it's not here, but our two third S A Os are, one, to create activities that will help our students make career goal decisions. And two, that they are being successful along the course of this track of this. Uh, so in addition to that, one of our action items, the science of success teams through the smart goals that Dr. J was talking about. Is to create, out and check activities to support our academy students, to make sure that I can save their supports, obviously, that they need to be successful here at Company College. Um, one of the things that we did uh this past semester was envisioning to students that are on probation level one and level two. Uh, to make sure that they are aware of their goals or their progress here on campus. A lot of our students are not aware of probation, even though that impacted financially, probably K P hats, their academic journey here at Company College. While we should are aware of of the next steps that need to take to make sure that they are needing satisfactory academic program. Uh, we also enriched to students that are not in programs that are financially eligible, and a lot of students. When they're applying to Company College, they're selecting what they think applies to them, right? But unfortunately, sometimes that means that there's selecting programs that don't qualify financially, so we're in teaching to those students. To connect with them, uh, solidify their career goals and uh making sure we change the nature of the papers and to have financially eligible program if possible. Next slide. Uh, one of the, we're focused to have this a competition semester is to implement an end of semester holistic student survey. And this thing out of a work in the holistic student, uh, holistic student support uh network that we're a part of this year. Um, so this is our, um, our goal is to implement this at the end of the semester to kind of get a. A feel of where students are in terms of their need in housing, the 20 housing security, if the uh experience in food insecurity. Uh, if they have no idea how to access our tutoring services, uh, so it's a way for us to gauge where our students' needs are. And if possible, already connect them to services that we offer, which should have a lot of services uh on our campus. Um, another um kind of goal for our success teams is to make sure students are completing their student education plans. Uh, so some of the things that some success teams have done is to incentivize meeting with the counselor, so they can update their education plan. For example, the business and digital studies success team was providing bookstore vouchers for students that were meeting with counselors, uh, to complete their comprehensive student education plan. We also have a call center here on campus who are calling all our students that don't have an F on campus and are still waiting appointment. So we found that, I'm not sure how often that campaign appears, so I've noticed when that happened, is appearing, I can have a lot more fun this calendar schedule. So that is awesome, and it's a way for students to have a roadmap of the courses and to complete their company college. So they're actually completing something at Company College and not just, you know, taking random courses. Um, next one, thank you. Um, another kind of uh thing that we're doing to kind of encourage our students to progress in their journey here. Is becoming more available, so our student services, um, advisors are becoming more available through appointments and often hours. Um, so for uh last semester and this semester, the business and digital studies and the fund arts communication and humanities student services advisors. Um, have implemented this. We also follow up, not just for spring twenty three, but for fall twenty four, spring twenty four, fall twenty three. Uh, we've been followed up with uh graduation applications at the midnight. Um, so if we catch them earlier on, we're able to help students, if possible to. Uh, one, we can be a second evaluation to make sure students aren't in fact not eligible if something isn't missed. Um, or to make, um, encouraging students, if they're only missing the opportunity to register for the missing requirements. Other activities, uh, we are specializing in tutoring and study jams, so that students are more prepared for their exams. Um, and then of your essays, uh, so a lot of the success teams do provide bookstore vouchers, um, to students that participate in tutoring services here on campus. We have also, as last semester started going into the English and math classes with my presentations. Um, introducing our total of counselors, right, and the success teams to them, so they are aware of the structure of our campus. Um, but inviting us to attend by the tutoring services, uh, but also it's a way for them to know the importance of the opportunity. English and math is one of our goals as a campus, to increase the success, to to increase the completion of a country that will English and math in their first year. Um, so if our hope is that we walk to campus, it's the classrooms and explain the importance because we part for every degree, you know, candidate for a transfer. Um, that they are, I don't want to take it more seriously, but also, you know, um, picking up the resources a little bit early along the semester. Um, as opposed to being more uh overwhelmed towards the end of the semester. Uh, recently, we've also been going to the D S L classes, um, to, you know, provide the information about the new certificates that are available to our students. The D S L progress. Thank you. Another thing we're doing is we're conducting completion campaigns, so we start encouraging students that have completed forty five minutes from working on campus. To check in with the council to check if they are on task, on track to uh to track the degree or certificate here on campus. So the counseling and the admissions and records workshop, uh, have also created in person and online recommendation application workshops. That they post throughout the application cycle. Um, they also have sent emails to students that have completed over forty five units regarding graduation application workshops. And encouraging to schedule a counseling appointment to check their progress towards graduation. A lot of the times they're very close, if they take the right class, so it's always, uh, good to have. Okay, another thing we're doing also, um, we're using Canvas as the method of communicating with our students, allow our students. And faculty use Canvas as a method of teaching, um, so we are sending Canvas announcements for, well, recently. Um, regarding graduation application workshops and other activities and events on campus. We're also, um, the counselors are reaching out to students regarding, uh, I already mentioned this, but for students that have graduations, applications tonight. We're planning next steps with them, either updating their E C N, encouraging them to enroll in their courses. Or sometimes they're just missing, you know, catch some other colleges and they forgot, so it's always good to, I would essentially with them after they get those, um, before they get those like the night, uh, emails. Um, and we're also, um, had an opportunity for faculty to request, um, that we go to the faculty presentation regarding the graduation application. Which we did also in the D S L classes. Um, in terms of, uh, we're also calling and texting students who have risk factors to help them improve uh success. Uh, one of the things we're doing is that transferred English math professors are teaching the early alerts to C R advice, student service advisors, follow up with students. And provide necessary support uh to the students. Also, most student success teams email students for academic probation on dismissal, returning studies and workshops. So which is a lot of communication, you'll notice, a lot of emails, a lot of checks, we're hoping we're not overwhelming students, but we, uh. We hope that at the end of the semester, we're seeing more increased days students completing, um, or graduating, we're seeing a decrease in student operation. We're seeing a decrease in student success, so, um, so we'll maybe at the end of the uh semester, or hopefully students will be from the right direction. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so a lot of the activities, um, and this is, now this is talking about how we are using the funding that is allocated to the success teams. We get advocated ten thousand, uh, dollars every year, I did them, or we have them, every applicant in here. Uh, and these are some of the activities that have been going on, a lot are faculty led, uh, or uh the collaboration across campus. Uh, programs and departments, it looks, uh, so we have a bunch of guest speakers, uh, there's a lot of creative writing and artists workshops. There's skill trips, uh, taking students to natural history museum, to capital temporary museum, to uh plenty of African American history museum. Um, their uh D S L is going to complete their class to the big bus that they tour to kind of have them practice their English skills. Uh, we're still have supplies to provide students with, uh, new students revival kits of that type of school supplies. Uh, they're of course, uh, continuing with the incentives for tutoring, we study jams and bookstore lectures. Uh, we're also host social matrix every semester, we have water coloring activity for fall specifically this semester. Um, through the observatory services committee, we got approved to take twenty students to a visiting imagination campus workshop, so we're working on that, that's gonna happen in May. Uh, we're also become available through peak registration to support students registered for classes, we're available for virtual and in person. There's just a lot of activities, uh, university tours, health events, mental health workshops, a lot of postgraduate, like visiting Obeda Street. Uh, career panels, career and major exploration workshops, and then we're also always available for, uh, different resource, but all. The different resource figures like senior day, community day, using the welcome day, welcoming anything on campus. Uh, where we can promote and represent our division and the work that we're doing with success teams. Um, so prior to the activities, we've had a career panel last semester, we're hosting our the since social sciences success teams, so it's another one this semester. They also hosted a self care workshop, uh, last semester. Our next steps, um, we are hoping to continue operative operational, operationalizing our, um. Case load management model, so more proactive outreach, increasing our student engagement through our programming, those student success teams. And reviewing our S A Ls and seeing if we're doing those metrics. We've also partnered with the wellness and student support implementation network, um, and we're going to bring back that work. And I think we're presenting at the next uh company committee to see how we can integrate that into our work here. And we'll be representing, uh, through the researcher at the community.
Question. Okay, trustee, do we have any questions, please trustee call. Doctor Sharon, no. In terms of tracking, yeah. Do you guys track? Which areas, for the laws, for access, how they organize that way, so I saw. Just different ways related to, do you guys track the type of intentions and which ones most used?
Um, I would say a part of that would be in our show list of the outcomes, uh, which we recently compared I D graphing. Um, which really helps us understand and impact on those events and strategies, but some of the other ones we have, so. Um, search on probation, which on two dismissal, we do have a broad theme about that, um.
And I have a, like, I have some, uh, event surveys. I was in the, I was in, using those recently.
In part of the days, like, invested in that. Remember that these students, which ones are most present, which ones have a more sustained lock up this. I know that through social activities, solicit, build community. Any additional ways, for example, with African students to be age outside of classroom, so to good to consume capacity. To track where we see the most involvement socially, but then also out of the. That's one question, just for future. Um, also, do you all have varied appointment times, like a good length of times of the day on duty, or is it, I mean, I've been doing the situation.
Yeah, so we have an extended hours to help, you're asking about that, um, so usually our hours of operation, usually Monday, Tuesday. Thursday, fourth, Wednesday, eight to six thirty, Friday's eight to noon. And council getting together, spend the proposal, current cabinet approved it, and then it's seven hours, which is a pilot. So now we're getting one Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, eight to six thirty, Wednesdays, eight to six thirty, Friday, eight to four thirty, last night, you will, Saturday. The collected data was super impactful, uh, so you have that data, um, quantitatively, the number she's been seeing, a supportive data. Obviously, it's very, that's very impactful, we never seem to do that again, president Perry cabinet approved this and stated it. So it does fit, we are now then.
Thank you, um, why is your future question, you're saying at the end of semester, I'm a relation. It seems like we're getting, uh, we're. Activities in the union, that way, she knows, I'm just wondering if, you know, for our, so you still have the news, right? Before we got to wait for both semester, and then do you guys keep getting better data, we should realize the differences.
Um, we have not looked at that, yeah.
I think that'd be very important, because there's a lot of research that talks about who tends to leverage. Especially the student success, the resources in Miami, so hopefully. Right, this representative of the population, but it would be good to see. We're going to also, forty hours, like, on the, in the.
I I'll look it in the back, so, like, with early alerts, the last data that we captured, commented, and some following it going, and we can look at this in the graphics. I agree, uh, that's where we are now with the implementation network, we're marketing our our strategical, improving transfer level English and math. And we came together as a group and said, you know what, let's focus on transfer level English and math for black African Americans and Latin American who have next to. Because of that's what the videos is, machine equity.
Something was very important to pull out, um, so that we can, because that work on site. But that we can be sure these preparation was impossible, thank you.
Um, you mentioned, um, and I I missed a part, so you talked about the programs that are in programs that don't. All apply for financially aid but don't qualify, how do you catch those together or throughout the process? So that they're not given to their educational, their capacity.
So maybe they're pulling the best teams for non-financially sold games, they reached out to them, uh, had a meaningful conversation. And then, um, if they they wanted to move from that code ninety seven, both financial and eligible program, they did that. Um, the other thing too, that's coupled with that and, um, support President Curry's executive leadership. Council now is able to change students' behavior, so that was a game changer for us. Not only can talking to students, you know, hey, go from a cosmetology level to significant, a cosmetology level one or two. To a completely, um, level of change in the board.
Yes, I I do have a, um, just a couple of areas and points to touch on, so, um, Dr. Perry, this is more, um. On the financial ways in eligible programs, is there a way that we can flag those courses in the, in the catalog or in the program? If they're U C or C S U or a certain pathway, is there, can we, you know, you have to start, extra, maybe with a cross or something, if it's like a program. A C T E, is there a way that we can identify that? So upfront, because now we're talking about adults, right? So if I just, if I'm not going through this program to see my counselor and I'm just signing up and taking this class. Then, you know, at the end result, that's on me, right, as a, you know, as a student, so is there a way that we can do that?
I I I think what you're asking for is already in the catalog, regardless of the U C or C U, that's already just noted in the catalog.
Right, but but those other, let's just say it with the other, because we have a lot of, you know, we have, you know, two years, four year, um. Um, so, you know, certificate programs, is there a way to flash all of those somehow in the, um, in the catalog?
They're they are flagged, but then also two different programs that. They are flagged, but then also to get the program mapped out. That we worked on with council department, but that's our reading program for different students. And so we have that as well, I think maybe we can have a conversation, uh, at the end of the day. Regarding to, if once they, they want to have a conversation, living catalog, also with that program mapper. And to see there's still a question that you might just look further. But I think where we're at regards to catalog and identification of, of the UC, CSU is there. But also, you know, program mapper goes out, and also we have a program that we need to be sales, or map out, look for other forty thousand as well. So I, I think we can look at, kept on the catalog, was currently there, there, I think that might be.
Okay, and thank you, I, um, thank you, Dr. Curry. Uh, I do see, I'm glad to see that on your, um, next steps, it's like eighteen, you know, operation of the whole process, right? So is there a way, um, I know you said that you, you know, like in Canva. But I know that students are also receiving emails and text messages, so is there a way for you to track when students opt out?
So, um, coincidentally, we're meeting with CRM, five's consultant. To look at, um, our dashboard, which is going with the text messaging and spark posts written up. Uh, so we could access that data.
Okay.
Who opts out, and it was like the open and red.
Right, right. And the reason I'm, I'm going with that is because, um, if, if we have a student. You know, and, and this is like another question too, um, and if you don't have this right now, if we could have this like in the next, maybe like, you know, year over year. Um, the number of students, I'm interested to see, like the number of students that are, um, that are. In good or not good academic standings, right? So if you are one of those students that's receiving all those alerts and your probation one or two, which I have no idea what it is, if you can explain that next time as well. So if a student is, you know, on that, you know, they're not in good financial standing. And they're opting out of all your messages, they're not participating in all the programs, is there a way for you to block their registration for next time around? So now that student has to come in and actually go through your process?
And I, I would tell you that there are things, you know, some money colleges, that you block registration for students, if they don't see council. Or, or they don't see someone to hold them up. I'm not in favor of that, uh, because some of our teams have other challenges, you know, to register. So then also to create another barrier for students, they'll take classes. And I think that barrier is significantly being served. I think what we're doing now, not to follow up the students, is important, but also making just further question regarding, um. If students are not able to perform well academically, uh, as we provide their representation, when they follow back up with students on probation. Uh, on probation that we want to achieve and provide those services and support, I think it's critical for our student population that we serve. I think if we add data that we got, see, that the student is on probation area where they at now, I think you present that to the board. But to create another barrier for students to lodge a registration, is, I, I don't know if that's a, um, a good idea for institution. Because that means students go to another college, to register their classes. And so we have to continue, from my perspective, providing services that we currently join. We're gonna continue to monitor students actively and follow up those students. I think one of the things that we did, switched to call center, has been very helpful, convert all these students all the time and follow up. We're also using CRM recruit, uh, server advice to follow students, drive the active plan, and do our under alerts. So we have a lot of systems that are in place, supports students before they get that point where they might not be able to. So we need, we need to start looking at nature a little bit more, regarding probation one or two, and follow students to smooth that. And also see what other services we can provide.
So I, um, thanks, Dr. Curry, can I insight, so maybe not block, but maybe like a hole. To kind of, you know, something to kind of get students, you know, the, you know, attention that. You know, that there's something else that's going on, maybe like to see additional support and counseling, because there is a lot of activity. You know, that's going on, there's a lot of stuff there, but the whole premise of that is to, um. We're reaching out to the students, but also to kind of get the student's attention, to kind of come in and also, you know, seek help. So that's the whole thing, so maybe not necessarily block, but maybe like a hole. That's all I have, cheers.
And I'm kind of relating to that, um, so have you been able, like, are, are there students? We can't reach because of that, because the phone is a barrier, a home phone, a cell phone. You talked a lot about calling and texting, are there some students that?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, I probably won't say arbitrarily, maybe ninety percent. The messaging portal through, I'll tell you this, when students have an application, they're coming out of college. You probably may even put a landline this phone number, give that information, um, and then. Um, but I will tell you, when we send out those text messages, they'll show us like, you know, out of the four thousand five hundred. Four thousand and one hundred received that text message. And then that's what we do, like a three common approach, text, the email to the company, we, and the campus seats. Like out of the chair room, I will tell you what, or soon you push out one of those messages. The council was in, you know, we stopped spying the application. When you push out a message for the student emergency fund, for financial aid, think of one for you, like thirteen apps, not really something. I remember the director reached out to me on Saturday, A C's were at six hundred away, did you send out the message? I'm, I'm telling you, right, so in spirit, seeing that they're getting a text, taking out, or they're giving the message.
Thank you.
So, um, page four. Can you say, uh, improve or missing students of course, providing holding. Transfer level math, digital case management, student success team. Sorry, and retain students of fall to spring due interventions and strategy.
Like that last one, um, retaining students of fall to spring, great direction strategies. Like a prime example are the workshops that the students have.
Can you please go to, uh, where all those abbreviations are? I forgot what page that was, uh, close to the last page or something? Page sixty. Now, this is just me, huh, that's me. What is that by C?
So those are our divisions, our divisions here on campus, so F C, uh, finance, communication, and humanities. Haves since our health and, uh, public services, so, uh, social sciences, also have this.
Oh.
Studies, um, and our.
I'm, I'm, it's just me. And then I saw something about, um, C R M, Jeremy, M or something.
Jeremy, right?
What is, what is C R M?
So CRM stands for customer relations management.
Okay, okay.
Probably just.
I just didn't know what to do, I'm trying to catch up, but these abbreviations, I know, you know, that. Everybody else is abbreviating everything, I'm still part of the old school, it takes my brain a while to figure out. I was trying to figure out everything, not really, not really looking at it, he said, okay, so I'm after you. So, thank you for trying to catch me up. And I want to let you know that I have been receiving those texts.
Yeah, alright.
Yes, I have been receiving those texts.
Good, good.
And I will be making that appointment with a counselor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad.
I just want to tell you, my phone has been blowing up, I want to let you know. No, it is the thing, I'm, I'm glad, I just want to let you know, and I'm looking, ding ding ding. So I get it, and I thank you for, thank you for your presentation. I'm gonna learn your abbreviation.
But to your point, because you done once, you also sent out a message with the. To help them understand like what S and C I stands, that's what they know, it's like, we use these acronyms, but we gotta educate students too.
I started saying that, and then I got an alert, I got an alert that I missed a glass. Or I missed a homework, right, like I said, I don't have that blank. And then I'm looking through my calendar, and I said, oh, I didn't have that blank. So, uh, it's good to pay attention. Until your cabinet just don't think you don't have another class, and so, I'm getting there, y'all, I'm getting there. And I, whoever sends out that early alert, like, I received a message from your teacher that, yada, yada, yada. And this is the early alert, and I said, okay, okay, let me go back and look at this. I went back and I said, hmm. So I did play catch up, but I caught up. Still not gonna tell you who my teachers are. I just want to let you know, I'm catching up with that home. But thank you, uh, for this presentation, very good.
Next presentation, yeah, we'll give you update of foundation company, uh, this year. We have, uh, Heather Burnout, we, um, the right continuation, so everybody please.
Could you think one is certainly, uh, as a foundation group, so I would run upon the director of the foundation. So we do provide a update on the foundation every month in the information section of the agenda. But tonight, I'm giving you a full presentation and overview of what we're up to. Next slide, oh, so the roundtable conference, perfect, so we have goals. Uh, the foundation approved those in January, I'm gonna give an overview of our current membership. Our regular meeting schedule and the foundation project chart, including the scholarship for rent expansion. So we did, uh, approve seven goals, um. Uh, the foundation was reestablished in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, uh, so we're rather new. Um, and we've been trying to grow our membership. We are a five oh one C, not-for-profit corporation, so we do handle any of the donations, monetary. Um, assets, um, even the Oliver W. Connor estate, uh, we oversee all of that. And there's more information on the foundation web page, which is available at compton.edu. We did approve seven goals, it took us a while to get through these, um, and narrow them down, but we do have seven goals, just like you guys. Uh, our number one is to hire a foundation manager, develop a five-year foundation giving plan for the district. Build a vacant foundation board of director positions, complete a fiscal year audit. Develop and host two events that bring constituents, um, groups to the campus to learn about what we do. Create a five-year budget similar to what the board of trustees has. And increase community engagement and encourage supporters to become involved with the Compton College mission and activities. Um, the staff, right now, it is just me, the application for the foundation manager closes April fifth. And we do have a few application applicants already there, so we'll be doing that hiring process later this spring. Our current partnership, so these are our board of directors. We currently have seven voting members, um, we should have nine. Uh, Dr. Curry, Dr. Nasser, and myself are ex-ofisial members, so we do not vote. And then next, our officers are Dan Schenault, our vice president office is vacant. Eddie McGee is our treasurer, and I also act as our secretary. Uh, we do have two vacancies, a nonprofit representative and a Compton faculty member. Uh, we actually put any district-related positions on hold, uh, we're kind of. On cap with too many district-related positions, and we're gonna focus on increasing the number of community members who serve on the board of directors. And so if you know of anybody who is interested, there is an info forum available on the foundation webpage. Um, the executive committee also acts as our board development committee, so we review those applications. Make a recommendation to the board of directors, we invite people to come with you to one of our meetings, ask them questions, and then we take action. To, um, vote them onto the board. Uh, our meeting schedule, we're about almost halfway through, uh, we meet, um. I think it's the third Thursday of every other month, in person at five o'clock, instructional building one, in the conference room one sixty one. We do have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, so if anybody wants to, next week, we're in twenty eight. March is already over, uh, so yeah, so if anybody would like to stop by, they are open to the public, and they're in instructional building one. An update from our board of directors from our January meeting, all members were present. We did have to have a hybrid meeting because a couple of board members were, um, conducting district business offsite. I believe we were at a conference, a trustee conference, so, um, Ms. Lopez and Dr. Curry, um, zoomed in. Um, at our next meeting, we will take action to, um. It is a subscription, a contract for a donor management system, we want to do this online. So this will actually allow us to accept donations online and also track our donors. Um, we can also set up levels of donors, um, there's a lot of aspects for that, so we hope to have that approved at the next meeting. The foundation is going to have a table at the community day resource fair. So we'll be there recruiting, uh, board of directors members and answering any questions. And then we are unfortunately going to finish out this year without a vice president, um, because our annual organization meeting is in June. Um, so rather than elect somebody for an interim of just a couple of months, we're going to take care of that. We do have a project chart that we follow, um, some things to highlight is the audit report. Dr. Nasser is working on this with CWDL, um, they are finishing out the financial statements for at least the last three years. Um, once we have those all solidified, we will do a, um, an actual audit and present that to the board for review and action. Um, annual dues, so we have brought this back. Um, so we're about seventy-five percent of them that I collected thus far. We're only asking a hundred and twenty dollars a year, that actually coincides with, we are the hundred and fourteen California Community College. And all of those firms are going to support an emergency grant program that we hope to, um, begin in twenty four, twenty five. In which case both faculty, staff, and students will ask for a one-time emergency grant of a hundred dollars. For our hundred and fourteen, we're still back and forth with that, because we want to keep some of our money. Um, but it would be a one-time, no questions asked, a hundred dollars. You, um, need a new tire, you need to pay the utility bill, so this would be above and beyond the emergency grants that the Compton College already offers. Uh, and with the foundation is going to co-host the annual academic and scholarship awards banquet. The date has been set as May thirtieth at six P M, you are all invited to attend. Um, all of our presidential scholars, our academic awards, and our scholarship awardees will be recognized then. And then the last, the foundation is also in the process of transferring the Oliver W. Connor Estate over to the foundation oversight. Right now, we have an administrator of the state who provides monthly updates to the board of trustees. Um, it's on the agenda this month as well, item seventeen point oh seven. And one item we'd like to highlight is our scholarship program extension. So with the financial aid office, we developed an expansion plan. Um, using the four hundred thousand dollars that were set aside from the telephone settlement last year. The goal was to increase the available award amount to eighty thousand dollars a year for the next five years. Several new scholarships were, um, developed, including scholarships for, um, CSU, UC, and HBCU. Transfer students, hard time students, and all of guided pathway divisions are now eligible to participate in this scholarship program. For a full list of the scholarships, you can go online, um, they're listed on the financial aid webpage. The application did open in December, um, a little late, because we were still hatching up the details of the new scholarships. Um, and the deadline was February twenty nine, we received a hundred and thirty-five applications, they're under review right now. Um, these, the individuals who do get a scholarship will be invited to the scholarship banquet on May thirtieth. This overview will be done in the past, over the past five years, the foundation has awarded more than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in scholarships. In twenty twenty-three, among twenty-one students were awarded thirty-nine thousand dollars trail. Um, so. So we'll, um, notify in April whether or not they receive a scholarship. so we'll, um, notify in April whether or not they receive a scholarship for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, and we're hoping that we give out the full eighty thousand dollars this year. And with that, does anybody have any questions?
Trustee, do you have any questions? Lady trustee Collins. Dr. Shulongo.
Thank you so much for the report. For February twenty-ninth, um, I'm just wondering for students who may vote after the investment scholarship is for twenty-four, twenty-five. So we basically have to be, uh, continuing student.
Some of them are transfer scholarships. The number ones, you, you do have some that that are, will go with them if they, um, transfer to a four-year Polygraph University. Uh, but the majority of them are for students who are returning in the fall semester.
Do we have other scholarship opportunities for new students?
That are just starting, so not yet. So the eligibility right now criteria is based on current enrollment, six or more units. You have to have a financial aid application and that first step. We did not change those criterias at this time.
But you February twenty-one is for fall.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be interesting to see how, what the impact may be, especially getting to utilization at the full amount. If it's, you know, if there is some way to, uh, add considerations, or choose, even if they may be returning, they're just not necessarily, um, with that process. And then for the open positions, if, if, you have the descriptors on there, for example, like a nonprofit representative. You said that you wanna have more community involved, and so it may be no designation, if it's just someone who's a non-native or have interest in serving.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Trustee Bobber. Trustee Dr. Moore.
Yes, uh, thank you, um, Heather for the presentation. Um, all in addition to, um, the, the seven goals that you have listed on slide number four, um, is the, um, part of the, um, the founda- the foundational giving, is there also any, um, grants that are in the pipeline or under consideration by the foundation?
That the foundation is a part of?
Yes.
I've seen that, that was in progress while we had a foundation manager. Since we're without that staff member at the moment, some things have been put on hold.
Okay. It is still part of that?
Yes.
Very good.
President. Trustee Ramon.
Thank you, President.
President. Great. I'm looking forward to this foundation. I'm glad it was reestablished, because that is something that we do need at our college. And I'm just so impressed about the scholarships we were talking about and, you know, by my mind. So what I really like about it is when you talked about that the community can go online and apply to be on this
On the board of direct?
On the board of directors, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, does it matter how many, how many?
No, so the, the meetings are open to the public, so if, if somebody is interested in learning what we do, they may attend one of the meetings. And then if they would show interest in being one of our board of directors, it's a short questionnaire. Uh, we do ask for a resume, any, um, nonprofit experience that they may have, what their connection is with the college, whether they be an alumni or a community partner. Um, and then the board of, board development committee, which is actually our executive committee, reviews that and makes a recommendation going forward.
Yeah, you can talk about that, one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Yeah.
So can, who can, who, who can do that?
So a hundred and fourteen dollars is actually the annual dues for the board of directors to participate. So we, it's kind of hard to ask our board of directors to go out and solicit funds when we don't give any to ourselves. So we reinstated that, so that's our minimum. You can always give more.
Oh, the board of directors?
Board of directors.
Oh, okay.
And part of our online donation management system is we will actually be setting up a campaign, so if individuals would also like to contribute to that emergency grant program, they will be able to.
Okay, so of course, can you, um, can you find out if it's legal, illegal, if there's a board policy or no board policy where there a board member can do a donation? Just basically, and so does our, does your name show, or is there a way that you have to say?
You could do it anonymous, but we would, you then get a letter from the foundation, uh, it's a tax receipt showing that you made a tax-adaptable donation. But you could probably keep it anonymous. I'm pretty sure that's an option on the online donation form. I will double check that.
Your daddy would give it, but you don't have, the public doesn't have to know if you don't have it.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number twelve, concept agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the concept agenda? Moved by trustee Ramos. Second by Dr. Little. Trustee, do you have any items to discuss? Okay, um, so trustee Collins. Dr. Shulongo.
No.
Just a solid little bit.
Uh, not a specific item, but just more of a comment.
Okay, but it's gonna, okay.
There's a general one, just giving some of these contracts more than one day prior to a boarding of approval before they're executed, okay, as a consideration.
Is it? Uh, I haven't, well, seventeen, seventeen?
Eleven.
Will be that. Okay. Trustee Dr. Moore, nothing to discuss. Trustee Ramos.
I don't have anything.
Trustee Galou, well seventeen. Anybody got a copy of all my questions and answers? Okay, I like doing that, I like to, of course. You know, you're on the other one. So, um, trustee Lopez, can you say what you were saying about?
Just in general, any contract that comes before the board, if they can give a plea, um, giving us more than one day of approval hypothetically, if the board would, uh, deny a contract and it's scheduled to be a service for a student. How would that work out? Just for consideration.
So, then also for consideration, uh, one thing that, that Dr. Curry knows that I do, I go to every contract. Does all the agenda. I might miss one or two. But what I'm seeing again is, and Dr. Curry, you're right, you do, uh, the board delegates, the president, chief, the executive officer, the authority to enter into contracts on behalf of the district. But they stopped this for a while, because it looked like it started back again, where somebody is working prior to the board approving. But I understand why it wasn't to because of circumstances that happened, like in these situations, so I do understand it, but just, just a little, on the, in the high, it would be different.
And I, and I, I have a similar as well, and I've been talking, ready to do some things regardless of possible, those applications. I prefer to everything come before the time where we not at that place, I've been very, um, I've been choosing that option. And we think that we've done a better job, but at this point, it's with those couples, and those people don't, like you said. Thank you.
So there was a motion and a statement, so please place your whole line vote. Let's see, yes. Item thirteen is action items. Thirteen oh one, naming of the Compton College, only Bill Liger. Can I get a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, can I get a motion? May I give a second? Hope that was a Did we have any discussion? Student trustee Collins.
Well, no, we don't.
Dr. Little.
If you have a question, question. Then, do you have a question?
Okay.
So, the recommendation from the committee, it was allocated, wanted to apply.
Right.
And just for context, the new business policy dating that to up till then was because of at least two members request in the board to go back on the business policy, correct?
Correct, and it had to do with the naming or the move from these discerning, if that was in policy, to including the entirety.
Because some of us were not we're expecting to go maybe first, but
Good.
And this is the number one, would, would mean that it wouldn't really store the full name. Uh, members can only, uh, hold his middle library.
Correct.
Okay. Let's compare. No other question.
Trustee Littlebit, no question. Trustee Dr. Moore.
Yes, um, what am I doing? Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my discussion, uh, uh, I think is, uh, I would like to make um, a motion that we table this item.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I have a motion.
Oh, so, so what can we do now? What can I do? Just review my comments? My vote on this, or my discussion, is because we've been at this for a while. So my comment is to go back and review to make sure that both parties are in agreement with this action. That's my vote, for whatever comment.
So, I, I think, just as a matter of procedure, um, as, as was stated, if there's a motion on the, you know, that's, that's, that's before the board at this time, and so board members may vote on that motion, um, as they, as they wish. Would my, you know, would, would be my, uh, uh, opinion.
Which motion? We, we motion to move it and second it and now want a discussion.
Yes.
And so her discussion is, she wants to do a motion to
my vote, my mo- my, my discussion is to reconsider this action item for all parties to be in agreement with the, the next steps, the action and the next steps that are to be taken with the, in the, with the letter. Is that good?
So, wh- what I would say about that is that if it's, as far as reconsideration, there hasn't been an action taken. Um, so if there is a, th- there's a motion and a second to take the action that is, you know, on the agenda, that is recommended by the, by the president. Um, if there is a, 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 a motion with, with that motion pending, if there's a motion to, um, base, no, no, it would nothing to amend. If I understand that the board member's comment, that there were the, what the board member proposes is to, uh, table the item, to come back for another time, right? So if, if that is, if that is the motion that is being made, while there is already a motion for action, uh, that is pending, then I guess the question would be whether any board member, um, is gonna second the motions being made to table the item. And if so, then there, there would be a vote on that before taking a vote on the action item.
So you have to do something with her motion before we do something with the uh, okay, so, for the current motion, can I get a motion and second, do we have to discuss?
Right, yes.
So, does that mean that, I'm just asking, and I hope trustee Ramos don't get to discuss? Because we started down that way, and next person would be trustee Ramos and then myself, so that stopped the discussion?
Um, I, I don't, I don't think, I think it is within the discretion of the board president on that, on that. So the board president can entertain discussion on the, on the motion that was made, the original motion, that is the motion to take action on the agenda item. Um, and then, uh, at, then entertain discussion on the, the motion to table, following that would be my suggestion.
So we do do it. Okay, so this one, so, 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 okay, I just, I was thinking about it. Okay, so, I, I have just had some discussion, I'm, I'm here, okay, uh, Dr. Curry, do you know if these meetings are recorded?
Minutes?
No, they're not recorded. Are these minutes, I mean, are there minutes to the meetings?
Yes.
So we're having, I'm trying to do this together, so we're having two different versions of what's happening at the meetings. So one of the statements was made that they got an architect to do a presentation. They didn't know that it was gonna cost anything, because it wasn't discussed. But there are minutes and they're typed up, and I don't know how to ask this.
Are you asking for the back, the back position for the meeting?
There you, yes, I was, can I ask for that?
You can position, right?
Okay. So that's what we have, um, I was about to go, but if the minutes, like when we have them right here, there was things I hear, say the minutes of the meeting, and then we could read them, and what an individual just been comes up and say something, and we're looking at the minutes, we'll say whatever we just say. I'm just saying, if the minutes of the meetings can be appointed.
S- s- so
I don't know how to
So I, I would say that the staff, the board, the board trustee, the pastor, based off the recognition, we, we went back and we began the policy, worked on the council, regards the policy, regards the life.
Yeah.
The committee has followed that for, that ministry regulation. It was not told, I didn't bring the minutes for the meeting, to be able for the board to discuss, but the committee made a recognition. The recognition went forward as including the policy, the council council, but also went forward to the advocate city. So the comedians followed what was asked of them based off the policy. If there are additional information the board would like to request, that's something, and I'm not saying we can't do that. That's something that we will go back to committee and request that information, that what the board is wish and would like to have in order to make a decision, but that's not required based off of the ministry regulation.
Okay, it was not required, that's fine. My only thing is one side is saying one thing and another side is saying another. And so if it's in the minutes, and, and they know it's in the minutes, then we, we don't have to see it, that's okay, I'm just saying.
I, I'm not saying that I can see it, what I'm saying is that
We didn't ask for.
We didn't ask for, and this is the first time I've heard that there's a concern regards to what the recognition came from, from the committee. And so we have, the staff has followed the ministry regulation. And so, we have, the staff has followed the ministry regulation to make sure that we brought forward the recommendation as outlined in the ministry regulation.
Okay.
If there's additional information the board would like to have before making decisions, such as the minutes, that's something that we would have to follow back up.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know about the other board members. I always say the truth is in the book. If it's in that, if it's in writing, what, what's going on, then hey. If it's not, then either somebody's not listening or. Or by not, you know, I, I don't know, I'm not in those meetings, not encouraged. I'm just saying. So, now we could go to. That was my discussion.
So.
So that.
Yeah, so there, there was essentially a procedural motion made, so before going, before voting on the, the original motion for action. I think for it to entertain, whether there's a second for the procedural motion, and if so.
And the procedural motion is the one that.
Is to table the current item, yes.
Right. Can I just state it again?
No, you got it.
I, I.
You have to state it again to get a second?
I, yeah, yeah, there should be, there should, the, the motion should be stated, I mean. Yeah, there, there, there needs to be a second. I, there was some discuss, it was in the context of, of the, of the original discussion. And so, um, a- as I heard, the, the, the motion, it was to table the item. Was it, was that?
Do I need to restate that again for a second?
I, I think, uh, I, I, I would suggest the, uh, the board president restated so that it's clear what the motion is, and then there can be. Uh, a call for a second, and if there is one discussion.
The motion that you're making is to table this item.
For clarification. For both sides.
For both sides.
The committee.
Okay. That's the motion.
Yes, that was the motion. We need a second motion to open up discussion.
I'm sorry, I, right?
The first motion was to open up discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, the first two comments were, for my question was, would the name be Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library?
Yeah.
Yes. That, i- i- is that the primary, I guess, because when, I didn't know that we were revisiting something else. But is the primary concern that that would not be the name?
Okay, the way, what I understood happened was there was a motion made for, to, for action on the item that's on the agenda. And there was a second of that motion.
Yeah.
And then, there was, and then the board president called for discussion of the motion for action on the agenda item. Uh, when it came to trustee Dopplemore, about trustee Dopplemore indicated that she wished there'd be. A tabling of the, of the pending motion, that is the motion for action on the item on the agenda. Um, as I, as I indicated trustee Calhoun. My suggestion was finish the discussion on the original motion, that is the motion for action. And then, come back to see if there's a second on the procedural motion to table the original motion. And I think that's where we are right now. I, 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 am I, am I responding to the question?
Yeah, you, you're making more, but you're responding to a question. I'm just trying to get clarification as to what is the reason that. Is it to not name the library Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library? I'm trying to see what, what, what the contestation is. That's what I'm, I'm, I'm.
That's.
I'm trying to get clear. So we can know, because last time, we, I'll speak for me. I thought that that was going to be the next, get Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. And when we had it. We came back and said, that was a whole revisiting of the policy. Because prior, at least I joined the board in 2018, prior to that. No board that I remember had taken it up officially. And we asked to take it up. I know that there had been con- continued conversation from the community. And from the Hart Holyfield family, which is why the board wanted to take it up. Which is why when we voted on it for the. Library name to be restored and we had the big event, and then. When there, we were told that the committee had gone through the process. There had been conversation with the family, when we saw the name. You know, many people were excited about that but did not love it. Again, going back to this motion that trustee Dopplemore is writing, that there was some confusion about what did we need. The whole reason of re-engaging the policy was to, I thought, was to ensure that the name be Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. And to ensure that the policy could not be arbitrarily changed as a new board came in or came off. It wasn't to contest the name be Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. It was to actually clarify that that was the question. And I know I was one of the board members who asked us to revisit it. I, I know President Calhoun was. We were both, and then the board agreed. We've gone through that process. What I'm asking is, is the question today of, is it going to be the full name? Back on the library? If that is, because that's what I thought we were pushing for this whole time. If that is not. Then I want clarification, because I don't want to be confused again. If, if, if the name is there, then I want to be clear about, then what is the other concern? Because I'm just not clear about that.
So. Hey. Based on what's occurred up to this point, I think the, the question, the original question is what? Uh, what, what, you stated trustee Little, that is, will the name be put on the library? And there, that, so that question was put to the board through a motion and a second. And then through discussion, trustee Dopplemore put forward that she wished for the item to be tabled. And so, that, at this point, there's been a, a motion to table the item. There hasn't been a second. If there is a second, then there would be a vote to table or not. If the board tables, if, if, if the board tables the item, then the board tables the item. If the board does not table the item, then there would be a vote on the original motion for action on the name.
Okay, so we can get clarification of why the table, but it's not to table to change the name from Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library.
The motion is I heard.
If the tabling is to change the name, then I know how to, okay, that's what I'm trying to ask. And I don't want to be confused again, and then it's something different than what we thought.
I think, okay, I think, uh, so. In the comments, somebody stood and said, they talked about the price.
We have the board talk about the pricing of the policy.
Right. Versus stood a few and said, they were unaware of the price. They said it was not discussed at the meeting. They said that they, they got the architect because they were asking, you know, architect.
There are two different issues. There's the name of the library and then the outside building, which is the student center, which are two different buildings and location. So their architect was to, if I understood and heard correctly, was to, to get a pricing for the outside. And the confusion was, we are receiving a denied request, and how are you denying it when I have not given you the scope price of the architect? For the outside of the building, which is the student center. Two different.
Okay. So if somebody was asking you, uh, get. A rendition of what the name would look like.
A rendering?
A rendering, the way it would look like. Does both of bring it to?
Of what would look?
Of what the name would look like.
Uh, Emily B. outside of the library?
I don't remember if I heard it that far. I don't know if I heard it was outside or inside. I'm not familiar with it. Right. All I've heard was that there was, uh, uh. They got an architect. They were asking to get an architect, and they got the architect to do the rendering. And then they said, they didn't know anything about the price of the four thousand dollars. Yes, the board did talk about it. Right? We did talk about who would we pay. But they're saying that at the meeting they went to, there was nothing there that said that they would keep paying the four thousand, whatever dollars.
On, nothing to say internal and external? Yeah, hasn't been determined who would?
No, what they're saying, they, at the meeting, it was not discussed about the price. So let me be quiet with Dr. Currie.
So, so the recommendation, and the, the policy says made regards to costs. The recommendation, going back to what, uh, Dr. Little mentioned, is about the name of the library, and that he directed CEO. To figure out regards to the cost as it relates to, is it internal, external funds regarding the nature? So, the recommendation, or what I got from since we started this work, was asking for the library to be changed. The name from Holyfield Library to Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. And that's what the committee had done. The policy talks about we made, and that's why the recommendation is for the board to direct the CEO to be able to figure out regard to how it's going to be paid. Regardless of signage. But you're at, the recommendation was for the name to be changed. And we followed that process. So, if you want to table it, I, I understand that, but the committee, the board has asked for the name to be changed, or the request to go back. Regards to Emily B. Hart Holyfield. That's what was done. So, the question regarding the signage, the, the, the recommendation is in, the director CEO, we have to work regards to that, because in the policy, it says we made. So then, once the name is changed, or if the board does that, then I have to be able to follow back up and give a, talk to the board regards to potential costs. But at the end of the day, the request was the name changed, and that had been born. And I think everyone has done that job. I do understand the question regards to tabling and, and other stuff that I'm requesting. But the original request was about the name change. And so, I recommend that the board approves that request, going from the Holyfield Library to Emily B. Hart Holyfield. And then the, then the CEO will come back to you regarding to potential next steps. But the request that was made by the family regards to name change is on the board agenda.
Okay. Clear brush. So what's this, what we have? Once this is approved tonight, about the name. Emily B. Hart Holy. Once we approve this tonight, then. It goes.
To me, regards to signage.
To the sign. Okay, I got it. So, I'm just back to the question, because I'm, I got it, I got it. I'm just having to put, who was asked to get. A drawing of it, something how the name wanted to be done, and that's what I'm saying.
I was. Uh, from what I can recall, and I don't have the minutes in front of me, there was a discussion with Ms. Black about a couple of different places, so. If we were to go to the, the, um, so there was a discussion about what she wanted with the plaque. On the outside of the building, if there were going to be a plaque. And I asked, did she have any information on what she wanted it to look like? I didn't get anything back from Ms. Black above, any idea of what she wanted a plaque on the exterior, I don't know what. Probably. Because we were trying to get pricing done.
Do you need permission? Of clarification, again, just so that I'm clear because again, of what happened the first time. So, after all this months of. Us wanting to ensure that the policy was in place, that no one could overturn it once we put it back in place. That when we came back, like I said, two people publicly acknowledged, we thought it would say the full name. Now we've gone through the policy, which said the committee would look at it. With this, it would be, it would be Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. It will be updated on the Compton College website, campus map. Um, I'm sorry, it just went down. I'm gonna wait a minute. I just want to make sure, and that the bio would be restored if it's no longer on the website, and that. And digital, all of that would be fully Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library, correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that that's what we are approving, that's what we are approving. If that was the request.
I think the only thing that I don't like in that letter, I'm trying to understand this. The name will remain in place until the library is demolished and or repurposed. If approved, the new name will be updated on the Compton College website.
That is referred back to the policy, because the policy talks about rebuilding that, that, that's where that, that statement comes.
But if it is demolished, the name will still go back up there?
From my perspective, I, 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 no, but that, that, there's a tie into the current, the current policy, regardless of new building.
No, but we want to clear. That the building would separate the library.
So, yeah, no.
It would remain. And. In my name, so, no, 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 Dr. Little had to move when she was saying something.
I'm just being clear that if her food for the library, that, and that, that's what the recommendation was, right? Okay, I just want to make sure that that's what we're saying.
Remain in place until the library is demolished and or repurposed.
So.
Does that mean?
I, I would, I would say if you were, if you're to text Calhoun regards to that, the recommendation that's been provided is about the name. And about Dr. Currie following back up regards to the cost. If you want to make a revision to the item, and I don't know if, if there is this possible, you want to talk about the, the library and other issues, like the whole term name. But the policy, from my perspective, covers that. But it's the recommendation that we brought, is about the name going from Holyfield Library to Emily B. Hart Holyfield. Which is what was requested. And so, I, my recommendation again, is that the board approves that and direct the CEO regards to follow back up with the cost of the signage. But that is what was asked of us, and that is what we have done.
So does that mean, and the policy was revised to ensure that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So does that mean that we need?
She needs a second to say the motion on this.
Does that mean, no, no, does that mean trustee Dopplemore needs to rescind her motion?
Well, that's up to trustee Dopplemore.
Well, I'm, so. Uh, no, trustee Dopplemore is not going to rescind the motion. The, my motion still remains to, um, I think it's a procedural motion to table this agenda item. Until both sides can come to an agreement with clearly understanding what the policy says, what the request of the family is. And what the campus or the, on the committee can do. So, that's, that's still my, that's still my motion, my comment, or whatever it is. Just to make sure that all parties are on the same page, because we have been going at this for, um, a while. So going through this process to table, to action something, and then go back. And then to revise it or do it again, it's just continuing to keep this going.
So. Let me say, so we requested the policy, we requested that the name be changed to Emily B. Hart Holyfield. The family agreed. If, irrespective of your motion, if this is approved tonight, the name Emily B. Hart Holyfield will be on the line. I'm making that, is that clear? And then Dr. Currie. Or the committee is going to meet and get with whatever the prices is. The, and my director, or business owner.
Correct.
Okay, and that means that would be a meeting for you or the committee?
And I, and I will follow back with the family.
And the, and the family.
And will the board be able to weigh in and say if we wanted it in, at each or, I mean, or we don't have a say after that? Your follow-up with the, your follow-up items, do we?
The question, the question will be regards to the science. The question, the question will be regards to the signage, the, the signage for the building. And I will have, we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for that. And then, once we figure that out, it may come back to the board, or it might be outside. I don't know who's paying, right? We have this, that's not decided regards to the cost of, of changing it. And to me, I don't know.
Talked about that with the board, that if we set precedent now to update what the board feels was our error for not acknowledging or reading the board policy properly, which I feel like we did, but that's a different conversation. That means moving forward tomorrow, someone's gonna change it into another building, and we're gonna be incurring all those costs every time? Is that what I'm hearing you saying?
It, it depends. Depends on what, how this conversation will go forward, then the policy says next. And so, I have to go back and work with the family regards to what is potential cost, and I don't know. Right? I got some numbers from facilities regards to that, but then also because they didn't listen to us about potential donation, and I would not have that conversation.
So, if I may, uh, Chair, so because of all of the different conversations and if then, then that, and the next steps, again, that is my reason, my reasoning for the procedural, the procedural, procedural motion to table this discussion for both sides to come to an agreement. Can I get a second for this procedural?
The second motion outweighs the first motion, because the first motion was to open it up for discussion. Trustee Dr. Moore made a, I'm just, I don't know all the proper rules, I'm just. So, her motion on the board, she even needs a second, or a dies for lack of a second, and we go back to the first.
Yes, the, the first motion, however, unless I miss something, it was for, not for discussion, was for action. For action on the recommendation that's on the agenda. That was the original motion, unless I misunderstood.
So, I just have a question, trustee Dr. Moore. With your motion that you're making, this, this actually, this already says that the name will be Emily B. Hart Holyfield, correct? That's what you say? Your motion is because there's something that is being said and not being said, or that whatever?
No, my, my, my request to table it is because there's a lot of verbal follow-up or action items with Dr. Curry, with the family. And I'm saying to table this renaming until all of that is upfront and both sides agree with the, agree with the renaming and whatever uh, second or follow-up action items.
So, right now, if everybody agrees, including the family, that the name be changed at Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library.
Yes.
So, the family is in agreement with what this says.
Yes.
But the family is not in agreement, well, it sounds like it's about the money, because they didn't know anything about it. But what Dr. Curry is saying, I'm not speaking for you, but if I'm saying wrong, but Dr. Curry is saying this vote of nine is for the name, Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. Am I correct on that? So, that's what it's all about, the correction of the name. Once this is voted on, Dr. Curry and the committee and the family will get together and iron out the other stuff. Am I correct?
No, it, what, what I have to figure out is regards to the cost, because the policy, the ministry regulation says that it may. And so, there was conversations about donations and other, and how we're gonna pay.
Well, and, and what I'm saying is once, just say, once we say yes to this is the name, then it's up to the committee, the family, and you to get together, if you ever come with the price.
And, and, and we have to pay, we have to figure out who's paying. That's correct.
Okay. So, is there a second on that motion? Then dies for a lack of a second. So, right now, what is on the table is to approve the name from Holyfield to Emily B. Hart Holyfield. Everything else will be worked out between Dr. Curry and the family and the committee. So, please place your online vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library.
Local site, right? Yes, we're here, library, picture inside, everything.
There's our, there's our picture, and then we have to work on the plaque, that, that, update the plaque, um, and so.
When that old sign is, the full name will be on both sides. Make sure on both sides.
Okay, so there's item twelve points. Okay, thirteen point zero two is the, uh, Compton Community Coalition Board Elections, sorry. California Community College Trustee Board Elections. There's seven applicants, or seven people that are recommended. Trustee, uh, Trent Little went through the applications, and her recommendation are the seven of the forty. Is there a motion? Don't worry.
Second.
Is there any discussion? So, next item is our Compton Community Coalition twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, who is running opportunity plans. With this, you got a couple of the original plans delivered, you got edits at the last quarter, you just a final draft of the document, and we recommend that you approve it. There's also a presentation adds information for chalk, seeing it's over enough, and so I recommend it for. Is there a second? So, it's moved by, um, trustee Ramos, seconded by, uh, trustee Little, uh, trustee Cars? Uh, Dr. Little? Any discussion, Dr. Little? Uh, and, uh, trustee Little? Trustee Dr. Moore?
No discussion.
Trustee Ramos? No discussion. Uh, board president Calhoun?
No discussion.
All my votes open.
That's your unanimous yes vote.
The next item on the agenda is thirty point zero four, the Compton Community College Internet Credit Repayment Schedule. We'll update our schedule regards to repayment, uh, for the, uh, for the line of credit competition for last year, regards to our payment schedule for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty seven. We have updated, revised, uh, plan as you know chart, and our last payment will be on June third, twenty twenty seven. I recommend approval. Is there a second?
One second.
Uh, moved by trustee Ramos, seconded by trustee Calhoun, sorry, Dr. Moore, sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh, any discussion, trustee Cars? Uh, trustee Little? Trustee Little? Trustee Dr. Moore?
No discussions.
Trustee Ramos? Uh, board president Calhoun?
No discussion.
Uh, we're taking all our votes.
That's your unanimous yes vote.
The next item on June thirty point zero five is Compton Community Coalition, First Thursday, California Public Industry Pictures Defamation Trust Fund. Uh, just the background to this item. Over the years, we have been, uh, uh, we've been, uh, depositing money into a trust account, First Thursday. At this moment, we have about four point seven, as of December first, four point seven million dollars. Our goal is to be by five hundred thousand next fiscal year and the following fiscal year. As we get the state budget, you have a good position for flexibility. And so now you have not only, you have the funding schedule, but you also have withdrawal. I mean, work with our plan is likely to be looking at a withdrawal schedule over the next five years. But these will help us in our budget development process, knowing that we'll be withdrawing five hundred thousand in the next two years. Help support our budget at this of First Thursday's cost. Is there a motion?
One second.
So, moved by trustee Ramos, seconded by, uh, trustee Dr. Moore, uh, trustee Cars? Trustee Little? Uh, trustee Lopez? Trustee Dr. Moore?
No discussions.
Trustee Ramos? Board president Calhoun?
No discussion.
Uh, all my votes is open. Uh, thirteen point zero six is the resolution regards to the budget transfer, which is a monthly item, also the board for transfers for the district. Uh, I recommend a move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ramos, seconded by trustee Dr. Moore. Uh, any discussion, trustee Cars? Sorry, Little? Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
No discussion.
Uh, trustee Ramos?
No discussion.
Board president Calhoun?
No discussion.
All my votes are open. The next item we have on the agenda is our evolution contract. This is, this is to, to extend, not expand, but to add additional services regards to, uh, evolution. Uh, what we're, what we're adding is a, a little experience to our software, which is something that we've been, we're, we're working on the last couple of months. Uh, there's a typical cost of sixty nine thousand dollars to work what happened this, this, through fiscal year, March thirty, first, tw- twenty twenty five. I recommend approval. So. Uh, we've moved by trustee Ramos, seconded by trustee Cars. Any discussion, trustee Cars? Trustee Little? Trustee, uh, Lopez?
No.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
No discussions.
Trustee Ramos? Board president Calhoun?
Wouldn't you say this for me?
This is adding a new platform to our, uh, evolution better software. All my voting is open.
That's your unanimous yes vote.
So, there we go to item forty point zero one, that is just an update on full-time equipment students. We included additional information based off the last meeting regards to our F P S and what we're doing. And it was based off of the question from trustee Little regards modality, and you get the information about the modality and continue to provide that to the board of trustees. Yes.
Would you be trapped in that just for verification, like you were trying to, what we're tracking?
Yes, and, and so the question will be, for example, we look at the inverse since severance remote library and in severance, we do track, we do have that data, which is publicly available online in our passports. You can look at that from a ratio equity perspective as well. So, there any questions regards to the fourth time president's presentation? Uh, then item sixteen is our board policy, some of our history, and also list our regulations. I, I got a lot of things to the Catholic team that have worked on board policies, and also over there in the center. Uh, over the last five years, we, we just continue to work in policy, that even been helpful, adding to the creation, because our board policies have been up there. So, this, to the information item, I do provide, uh, item seventeen point zero seven, I provide an update on how the government is paying of which, uh, Heather Parton mentioned in her presentation. We also provide a report as based to do the enrollment, I will continue to do that work. Also, item seventeen point one zero, provide an update on the budget development process. We've been paying a lot of attention to the budget and thank you to the board of trustees for approving our recommendation, regards to line of credit, repayment schedule, and also about the purchase Thursday funding and withdrawal schedule. Uh, but we're really monitoring the state budget. Uh, we do have concerns, but we're also just going to continue to monitor. Uh, next month, we will have a budget workshop, which will improve our, um, our board, our goals for the college for next year, also include our budget structure as well. And that's all that I have regards to the, the reports. But what that, oh, sorry, shot closed?
Seventeen point oh five. That's through of twenty twenty two.
The report, yeah.
Is it seventeen oh five?
Yeah.
Yeah, so seventeen, seventeen, oh, I'm sorry, trustee. We're, we're not gonna have one between, because it's the last year, I looked at the data. And so, what we're gonna do this summer, we'll provide a report to the board of trustees regards to the institutions that go that would go through twenty twenty four, which is our intended goals. And so, we have that sometime in the summer, uh, I'm hopeful, or not early summer, but sometime in the summer, for the board of trustees to have. Yeah, once the, uh, once the closeout of the, the trust, then it'll be the other foundation, there's, in, in the report, there's been studies we're working on with our trustee regards to the, uh, out of the Congress, and so we still have to work through those issues, which should outline in the report. Regards, we have the claims, we have a couple of issues that have to work through, before the trust can be tracked through. And the final thing is a board, uh, follow-up items. So, we continue to track our follow-up items of the comment made by board president Calhoun regards to spectrum. That's one of these that we're looking into, just, it just takes time. But if you look at every single month, we're getting so many different requests regards to follow-up items, so we're just trying to, fill them as much as possible. And we have to prioritize those requests. Uh, we do understand the concern about having these televised, or wanting to be televised. But at the same time, we also have to understand our capacity, and what, how we need to be done each month with all some of these different activities that are trying to, to, to support us to see that. But we are monitoring that, regards to all the board requests. A lot of time we're coming back with more reports, our board letters, with the follow-up items for the board of trustees. And we have been, we've been documenting it, and we continue to monitor those that have not been. Trustee Little?
This was responding to the expectations for us. When we record these meetings, they are then available our, or quickly.
The next morning, we post them the next morning on, on YouTube. The next morning, when you post them, the next morning, you are, you are the chief chair.
Because not everyone has access to the spectrum, right, because that's a pain.
And I don't, I don't, I don't know, I think that's, we continue to be certain, I don't know how that works, and who has access to this, but my understanding is a paid service, but I don't know how it works with the chairman.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that as we look at all the options that we, as inclusive as possible, because I know, uh, several of them, oh, divided elderly they don't have that.
And we'll follow back on that. Uh, future, is there, future item number eighteen point zero one, uh, trustee Cars? Trustee Little?
No.
Trustee Lopez?
No.
Trustee Daphne Moore?
No.
Trustee Ramos? No. Uh, Board President Calhoun?
No, never.
So there we go into all the works, and I have a little. I do want to say, first of all, thank you to the Association of Government for their work there in, uh, Western City, having meetings, uh, uh, around the vaccine waters, uh, today, and also those staff from, uh, Robert and C. and all. And they're excited, they're coming back to campus, uh, they're on their way back, uh, this evening. I do want to remind people that we have a meeting day scheduled for April twenty, twenty twenty four, uh, when you know, grand opening for the trust, no good, not really more. Uh, today, we had a virtual campus forum, and we talked about various items from Roman to, um, uh, institute of credit committees. To, we also talked about, uh, student success, uh, so it was a very important meeting and a conversation, we all talked about what's working well, and what's not working well in conference college. So I want to say thank you to the faculty staff who participated in that. Also want to say thank you to the faculty staff and board trustee about the accreditation thing. I cited that in my, my newsletter, that we had a visit on February twenty, twenty first, and we received a, a copy of the conference report, and I shared because the credit commission will release it for in June, which will be final, but they, the, the committee chair, they were recommending, uh, two combinations for the college. There was no recommendation, regardless of the standards, which is pretty good, uh, that we received no recommendation. So I want to say thank you to Sherry Burger, our accreditation division officer, also thank you to Amber Gillis, who serves as our faculty coordinator for accreditation, with her work, but also thank you to Monica Sencos, who was our, uh, director of the chief of banking, and was our previous, uh, accreditation division officer, and thank you to the chairs and, and the, 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 the. And that concludes my report. Okay, so now we go to the board with the new votes. Trustee Cars?
I don't have time already, but, um, for the first.
Uh, trustee Presley?
I'm going to acknowledge our students just being honored to participate in this, and, and, uh, state of the, maybe college, these coffees. Including the potential international women's day, we have outstanding, we have, uh, like mission college where, uh, state five years for, uh, which will be an opportunity for our students, as well as faculty, uh, uh, assembly members and, uh, leader, women leaders in instruction management. Um, and just to, 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 uh, encourage our students who are outstanding ambassadors, uh, for this institution.
Trustee Lopez?
No.
Yeah, and trustee Daphne Moore?
Yes, um, uh, earlier today, I had the, uh, the opportunity to meet with, um, with Dr. Ferguson and tour and, and, and that, or participated in that tour of the Child Development Center. So I will be, um, sitting, you have the period, will with Dr. Ferguson, on my recap, um, on that, um, on the tour that was ended earlier today. And also this, uh, this past weekend, I had the, um, I had the opportunity to attend one of the Taco and Taxes, uh, um, tax filing events that's happening, we have several, um, uh, tax, tax filing or tax preparation organizations that are, um, following underneath that VIDA. Uh, the, 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 the tax, the pre-tax prep, and I just wanted to remind, you know, like our students that, um, in terms of, you know, cost savings to them, that, that is something that's available to, um, if students cannot participate um, or join a tax prep site on our campus, they are being offered throughout the additional, um, assembly districts and, uh, throughout our community. But on Saturday, I was able to, what am I, participate and attend the one offered by, um, Senate District Thirty Three, which is, um, Senator Lee, that goes always this area in the city of Fairmount, so just wanted to remind everyone of that service that we're, you know, that's offered to low income residents as well as, you know, students for them to participate in, and that's all I have to make of it.
Trustee Ramos? Your report. Trustee Calhoun?
I want to thank, uh, HR, the, 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 the. I went to, I had surgery on my eye, and so I had to get some glasses. So I'm went there to get the glasses, and they said I would have to pay four hundred dollars. And I said, no, I have VSB. And so they looked in the computer and said I don't have VSB. So, you know, arguing is soon that I figured. Yes, they office, so I left out, I called the college, and I think Sylvia got me in touch. And they emailed me my little card that said VSB. So I've been trying to make it up for me, so I had to go in person, but I went in person, no people weren't there, but the supervisor was there. The supervisor immediately went to the same laptop that the employee did, without me giving her my card, and saw that I had VSB. So I only had to pay a hundred dollars for my glasses, thank you, VSB, but I had a nice talk with the supervisor, and she even listened to the voicemail on the phone and saw that I had called four times, but nothing to know about it, and so she's gonna have a talk with her staff, but thank you, staff, for sending me my little card, so I only have to pay a hundred dollars for my glasses, thank y'all very much.
Sure, if I may, I'm sorry, I want you to.
No, it is my turn, then we can go back to you. And so I want to thank them for that, but I want to thank the staff who's staying here. I want to thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all, and whatever else I was gonna say, I don't have to say it, but I just want to thank y'all for my benefits.
If I may, if, if I could just make, um, this is like to my earlier comment about, um, in addition to, um, this weekend, I had the, um, I also have the opportunity to attend the track and field event at Cal State LA. And, um, it's kind of like pre-track season, you know, we're twenty, you know, we're three sixty days of great weather, so we don't kind of have an indoor track season. Um, but I also had the opportunity to speak with, um, two of our, um, track and field students. And, um, I guess like my, you know, the reason for my comment was that, um, the additional support, that, um, it takes a lot for a student to be, you know, just a student, but to take on those additional roles and responsibilities. I know a lot of times we talk about basic needs and, you know, students that have to work, and, you know, students that are parents, but, you know, also there's another segment of students, I know we have a lot of different sports, but I would just like to, um, you know, explore and see the additional support and funding that these student athletes are, you know, are receiving. Um, it was just those two students, I did not see a coach, if there was a coach there, you know, um, or additional parents or boosters or whoever that were there with those students, but that, that little extra prep, even if you have a cool, with some snacks, some ice, or refreshments in the cooler, that provides additional morale boosting for our students in terms of marketing, other students wanting to come to Compton College and run, and this, I'm actually speaking in terms of like the track and field, but that goes like for other, that goes for other, um, um, uh, sports teams as well.
I just think that, one, this is not a legit item, but I.
But it's just part of my comment.
I know, it's part of your comment, but it's not, it's not an item, but I would say that you asked me to follow up for the board, in the board, in my recommendations, and the board, we will come back with what support we are providing to some of them, and provide that information. I'm not aware of what happened this past weekend, and what the comments were, and was this a safety data includes our, I don't know, we'll follow up. But I think as an appropriate follow up to your question regarding the booster and what we're doing at, keeping this information, and the update regards to athletics now we move forward. My concern is that we have a lot of requests regards to the budget process, and everyone, a lot of people are asking for these sort of funds, and we're trying to manage a budget, not know, and also understand the budget is certainly of the state, and so I want to be mindful that we're going to do a lot of different requests, and a lot of different conversations will come from there regards to programs and funding, and we need to make sure that the follow was on the board agenda regards to budget development process, regards to the allocation of funds. And, but we can provide the information, when we get to the, the current allocation of funds, how funds are allocated, that policies are being set, and we'll follow that process. That makes sense.
Yes, I, I understand, I understand that, so my, again, so my comment is, the morale is considering the morale of student athletes as well. Um, because those students, they are a disruption in the Compton College track.
I was just saying. No, no, that this doctor, you just say it wasn't agenda, and he was gonna give you a follow up?
This is part of my, this is part of my comment, we're supporting, we're supporting, that's really all I'm trying to say, for the morale, you know, of the students as well, that's all, that's, that's all I wanted to add from my comment.
Okay. It is.
It is, uh, twenty twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr., uh, Dr. Little?
Yes, um, thank you, I wanted to close in the memory of my uncle Gerald Oak Wiley. Um, he passed a couple of weeks ago, but it was a long time, entrepreneur, a publicologist here in the city of Compton, a business owner, and, um, just all the positive.
And I'd like to, uh, close in the memory of Dr. Donald Roach, he was a faculty member at Compton College since nineteen eighty five. Nineteen eighty. So, we'd like to close in the memory of both of these two individuals, and God bless their family. Oh, the meeting is adjourned at eight twenty three. PM.